Good evening. This is the May 27th meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle. Mr. Secretary.
First case tonight is Mount Kistel Country Club.
So we have draft resolutions for the special use permit and SECR. Does the applicant have anything? That they wish to say to the board?
If we can go through the resolution, we received the draft and a couple of comments whenever it's appropriate to go through them.
Yeah. Yeah, this would be the time.
Okay, so. On. Page nine of the resolution. Paragraph four at the top will be line three and four. It says, the existing buffer areas on the property are such that the proposed amendments will not be visually intrusive to adjoining residential properties, particularly in light of the location on the property. And then it kind of loses sense of the changes contemplated by the proposed project. It's just a maybe just a. Cleaning up the sentence didn't make sense to me. I understand what it means, but. I just wanted to see if there's maybe something left over or something that should be reworded.
Eric, do you see what he's referring to?
I'm trying to find it. Where is it again? Which?
Nine, line three.
Page nine, line three. And I may have like a slightly different version. What under what? What is it? What's the category under? What is it? What is it list or?
Buffer area.
Buffer areas.
It's a paragraph four.
Right, okay, so the existing buffer areas in the property are such that those not be visually intrusive to adjoining residential properties. Property. And the size of the property, therefore no additional buffer areas are required at this time.
Maybe there's an and missing.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure. What which which sentence are you having concerns about?
I'm looking at line three, in light of location on the property of the changes contemplated by proposed project.
Okay, in light of the location of the property, it should be, yeah, and the changes. Sorry, yeah, it should be should be an and instead of an of, right?
Okay, okay, no, no problem. Thank you. Then on the same page. The first of be it further resolved on line thirty-three. Work shall begin within six months and be completed within a year. I wanted to. Suggest that the six months period may be, under current situation, a little too optimistic. Just because of the situation that we're in and. I think perhaps Mike Corcione, who I think is on the on the call, who is there for the for the club, can provide additional information, but I think that if if the board was agreeable to change it to eighteen months, that would give the club basically a year to to get ready for the project.
Change change the start date to eighteen months?
Yes.
And finish by when?
Oh, within a year. Within a year.
The start start date within eighteen months, that's a long time, isn't it?
Well, it is. It is June now.
Right.
So if they start, if they don't start this fall. They would have to start most likely in next spring, so that's twelve months. Or thereabouts. If for whatever reason, it's better for the club to start the following fall, that would fall within the eighteen months period.
How long do you think the construction will take?
Yeah, if I can answer. If you could just tell.
We've had estimates from the contractors about a three.
How long?
About a three month window from the contractor is what we've had estimates and where we look to extend the start date. One of the things is the seasonality of the bubble and the fact that it would only be used October to April. Makes sense that we would want to start the installation and use as close to when we can get the operation going. And that's why if we miss this fall, we may look to the following fall for the beginning of the installation.
That makes sense.
Yeah, just from a economic perspective, would be really helpful if we could have that change. And appreciated.
So I know.
Go ahead.
I know the eighteen months window sounds long, but if you look at the the optimal times to to do this project, it's really either the fall or the spring. So it seems reasonable to. Give ourselves the. The window to actually get everything lined up and and be able to. Start the construction in the fall of twenty-one.
And and the equipment lead time for order is about fourteen weeks. And so we most likely wouldn't get an order in in time either to get the installation started this fall.
So if you started in the fall of twenty-one, when would you be finished?
We'd want to finish. I suspect they'd want to be finished.
Exactly, as close to when we can get it up and running as.
So you're looking at starting in July?
Hopefully, yes. Yep, correct. But we used to be eighteen months just to be in that six month increment. One of the reasons we're starting a little earlier, when you say July, would we wouldn't. September to mid-October, when we'd get the majority of the disruption to the current play to take place.
So what what term are we looking for? Eighteen months to start and and twenty month twenty four month? Twenty-four months to complete or something like that?
Well, yes.
Correct.
Any comments from the board?
I think that sounds reasonable considering the current atmosphere and what's going on. I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I assume if there are any changes in conditions that might affect the project, we would be made aware of that and have a. Have the ability to add some big conditions, Eric, is that?
You know, it's that was the one concern I was thinking about. You know, the the other option is to, you know, have a more limited time to start and then they could come in for an extension if they can't. If you're concerned about changing conditions, I don't think the Mount Kistel Country Club is going to change that that much, but it's really up to the board what they're comfortable with. But that was the one issue I was thinking of by setting out such a a long start date is whether there's a possibility of change in conditions, so. Could they, you know, I don't know, you know, it would be more difficult to. Add. Provisions in based on changed conditions without them having to come back for a renewal than it, you know, so to do it on your own accord. That would be somewhat more difficult. Than having them come back and request an extension.
Well, I think probably if if the conditions change that drastically, they would probably want to come back just to make sure that. That everything they're doing is going to be fine.
Well, I think the conditions that are spelled out in the resolution define a pretty. In a detail, the. You know, the construction, the conditions that are have to be met, the mitigation planting. All those things are spelled out in the resolution and the club needs to abide by it.
Right, no, the conditions we're talking about are the conditions around the property, like if something. If if something changed in the topography somehow, or, you know, there you guys took down a lot of trees or a lot of the buffer areas that were there in the interim in that eighteen month period, that could change the the, you know, the validity of the resolution at that point. So that's that's why there's usually a shorter time to start.
Is there is there any component of the work that would start before? This eighteen month period before the erection of the the bubble itself? Will you be doing any site work, any plantings, any any of that other work, the installation of of?
Well, so I don't think that the utilities and all the surrounding work would be done in in advance of the actual construction erection of the bubble. Because that would that would create more of a disruption to the club's operation. I think that the one thing that the club might consider is putting in the landscaping earlier. If that, and I'm just thinking out loud more than. That because that would not really affect the actual construction. But other than that, everything that is shown and that's contemplated is tied to the actual work, including the storm, drainage systems, bringing the utilities, and of course, the the actual excavation construction.
Are you going to attempt to do it this fall? This, when when are you when are you going to try to start?
We haven't gone through the point. You want to go, Victor?
No, no, go ahead.
I was going to say, we haven't gone to the point yet to actually have the membership final approval yet. The likelihood of getting started this fall would be a challenge. We have a concern that if there's an outbreak of COVID again in November and we had the bubble up, we wouldn't be able to use it, so we have that as a risk actor as well as a reason not to start this October and creating it less likely.
Yeah, I think initially.
We don't currently have a date yet to start construction. We're.
Folks, can I suggest if you're not speaking to put your your mute button on so that we don't get the reverberation of the echo? Thank you.
I would only add that the, if I understand correctly, the club is not yet open at this point. Is that correct, Mike?
That is correct, Victor.
So that alone kind of puts. Is start of construction in question. There's going to be a lot of serious discussion within the club. Once this process is completed. And I think the club needs to make some hard decisions as to how they're going to proceed.
Do you know when this will be put before a vote? I'm sorry, did I miss that?
We haven't. We haven't set a date yet. Most likely, we'd be looking probably towards the end of the summer. It's a matter of, you know, getting the membership back, usually for these things we hold special meetings and gatherings. And the ability to conduct that is going to be driven by the COVID. Opening. But I anticipate the end of the summer, early fall.
I think the timing they're requesting sounds reasonable.
Sabrina, do you have a an opinion?
I, you know, I I think that we can be respectful of the timing, particularly given the situation we find ourselves in. I I think that, you know, we. I don't envision any great changes in regards to the town's codes between now and then the timeframe that they're speaking of. I guess I we are looking for extensions on almost every project that is out there, given the pandemic and the fact that construction has been put off for three months. There's a seasonality that affects planting at this point, if you're putting in trees and bushes. So I think that their timeframes that they're asking for are appropriate. You know, I think that the if the board is hesitant to give such a long timeframe, then I think the extension clause coming in and asking for an extension is something that is relatively quick. If you decide not to grant such a lengthy expiration. You know, we have been working as a town with the boards, you know, all throughout the pandemic, so it is relatively quick to get an extension if you need an extension. You know, so I, you know, I could go either way. I would advise the board either way. I think it's kind of, you know, I go to Eric, is there a concern about setting precedent if we set a timeframe so long coming out of, you know, a decision?
Right, I mean, I don't think it would be precedent. I think each situation is different. Obviously, this is a seasonal type of dome that's dependent upon, you know, that you wouldn't really start construction on until a certain time, so there's that consideration. I agree with you. It's really the comfort level of the board. I I don't see a huge a big downside to, you know, requiring the applicant just to write a letter asking them for an extension if they don't. If they're not able to start it this fall, to be honest, you know, which is the way the board typically proceeds. We're not obviously not in the typical situation now. So I don't think I don't think we would grant such a long period if it wasn't for the existing circumstances of the pandemic. So it's really what the board is comfortable with. At this point.
We we know they're not going to start until next summer. Let's be honest, and if they have to go for a board vote or a vote of the membership, it's not going to happen this this fall. It's going to happen next fall. Can we cut it down to maybe fifteen months as opposed to eighteen months to start?
That would mean something like you're starting by September of twenty-one.
I would think in all actuality, I would think in all actuality, if you're looking to start, you should start by the spring twenty twenty-one construction season.
I personally don't have a problem with giving them the eighteen months. Now, the the country club has been. Here in our area for many, many, many years. They've been in front of us for other projects. They've always maintained their responsibilities. They've always done the right thing. We're in very special circumstances right now and because it's a seasonal thing and because they have a problem with getting their their material ordered in time to get things going and not wanting to be disrupted and not being able to finish. My feeling is if they need the eighteen months, I don't have a problem giving it to them.
I agree with Tony.
I agree with Tony as well. I have no problem with it.
Okay, what's your next point? Was were there any other comments on the resolution?
Then I have just a couple of clarifications, reading through the. Other conditions on page ten. And eleven. Point number nine. On page ten. On. Which is line seventeen.
Which is line seventeen.
My draft, it it addresses the. Calculations for the infiltration. And Mr. Seole perhaps can talk to that, but according to the memo issued of March seventeen twenty twenty, that item, which is ST one, has been satisfied. So I I just want to know whether the conditions that have been satisfied needs to be included in the resolution.
From an administrative standpoint, I think we had meetings about this. Whether you submitted anything that I looked at and reviewed and approved, I don't recall. I've always rather be safe than sorry and put it in there. If it's been done already and you believe it's been submitted, when you submit the packet to my attention, I would just reinclude that again. And it should not be an issue if it was looked at by me previously.
I agree.
Okay, no, no problem. Just wanted to understand exactly. So, yeah, so I think this is pretty much it. There was the ST one, ST two. Mr. Seole's comments and G one and G two. But certainly will follow through and submit those items. As needed. And I think that's the only other comments that I had, otherwise I'm. I have nothing further.
I have a comment.
Yep.
In the. Be it further resolved where it says work shall begin within six months. Number three. Is the exterior of the dwelling shall be maintained. It's not a dwelling.
So you want to say structure?
Yeah.
You're right. I actually don't know how this applies.
That's it.
Would. What the structure would this refer to? The dome or the club?
It would be the dome, I imagine.
The dome.
We could say the exterior of the dome shall be maintained in a good state of repair.
Yeah.
I I guess you're right. You don't need it. Any changes, yeah, I think it still would apply. Any changes to the exterior of the dome shall be subject to the approval of the board. I don't see a problem with that.
Change the color.
Not changing the color, right?
No, we're not.
Correct.
Did the board like the color?
Wonderful.
We can't wait to see.
Thank you.
Anything else, Victor?
No, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Eric, what comes next?
So if the board has no further comments and none of the town. Consultants or personnel have any comments, then you would have a motion to approve the the SECR resolution first and then once that's done, you could move to approve the special permit and variance application. Resolution, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone else? Bob, Sabrina, anything else you want to add?
I have no comment.
Okay.
I have no further comment.
Okay. Okay, I will make. Motion that the.
The SECR resolution.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just look. Just looking for it.
May twenty-second email.
Howard, maybe you can help me with this, because I can't find my document now. I'll make I'll make a motion that the board approve the. Resolution, the SECR resolution is drafted by council dated May twenty. We dating it today or?
Yeah, twenty-seven.
May twenty-seventh twenty twenty. Be approved?
Granting and granting a negative determination under SECR, negative declaration under SECR.
Right, negative negative declaration.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And then.
If you want to, if you can poll the members, it's always better to do it that way. If Jackie Jackie could poll the members.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper?
Yes.
Anthony Giordina?
Hi.
Harvey Bonaparte?
Yes.
Howard Dubs?
Yes.
Michael Nolan?
Yes.
I make a further motion that the special use permit and variance. As drafted by council and dated. May twenty-seventh twenty twenty. Be approved.
A second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper?
Yes.
Anthony Giordina?
Yes.
Harvey Bonaparte?
Yes.
Howard Dubs?
Yes.
Michael Nolan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. We hope to be filing for the planning for the building permit. All within due time. Thank you very much.
We'll have our rackets ready.
Are we ready for Gretzko? Yes. Gretzko.
Mary, you're up.
Okay. We're representing the Gretzkos. Hold on one second. Want to get the drawing up? Okay, so here's the Gretzko residence, twelve hundred Hardscrabble Road. House, original house was built in nineteen thirty-seven. Additions were done in the two thousands. The house and the garage were original. This part was added. And then going around the garage. So here's the original garage. This was a piece that was added and there's a bedroom extension upstairs, a family room and a porch downstairs. So the actual garage is quite small for two cars, unusable for two cars. And the fact that it's so close to the kitchen, the desire was to finish the space to make it a gym playroom. Gretzkos have two children, twins who are seven. So let me go through. Show you the plans and then we'll kind of back up a little bit. So, okay, so here's. Here's the site plan. So here is the existing house and the garage. And what we'd like to do is add a mudroom. And then connect it to a new two-car garage. The issue is the. The grade slopes steeply down in the back of the garage. And there's an existing pathway that leads through here. So what we decided to do architecturally, which made sense, was connect the mudroom to the garage with the covered opening where you could get through to the backyard. Because otherwise you had kind of a. Good perimeter go around, so let me get the drawings smaller. Okay. Here. And my helpful assistant here, my son, so. Here's the existing house and here's the garage. What we're proposing to do. What we're proposing to do. Okay, hold on one sec. Okay, what we're proposing to do is take that garage, make it into an exercise playroom, add a mudroom and then have a small porch step down and here's the new garage next to it. And architecturally, you know, we try to blend in with the house, using materials, slate roof, standing seam copper, which is on the current porch now. And from the back, you can see how there's this steep slope down by keeping this opening, we allow people to get through, to get down to the backyard. And here's the other side. So what this means is on the site plan. Let's get that a little bigger. Okay. So the existing house is non-conforming at 43.1 feet from the front. The new garage will be non-conforming at, you know, mask, it's basically 52 feet. I'm asking for 50 feet in case there's a little variation. 50 feet from the front and 28 feet from the side. The reason the property, the house was placed in this corner is because it slopes down to the back and slopes down here. And by putting it in this location, it was in good proximity of the road, but also made sense in terms of the grade. To the right of the house and you can't really see, there's a large piece of property which is owned by the town of Newcastle. Then when you get to the next contiguous property, there's a small house on it, which is over 400 feet away. So there's really no neighbor to the right that will be affected to the front. The setback is actually more than the existing house. So we feel it's a small imposition in terms of the property. I don't know if you have any questions.
Mary, can you go back to the street view you started with?
The photographs?
Yeah.
Sure. And let's see, on my view, you guys are covering half of it. I'm not sure if on your view as well. So that's the, that's the garage that is the non-conforming setback existing. And that's part of the original structure.
And the, the entrance to the garage is on the side?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's actually in this picture. So you can see you come around driveway here and that's the entrance to the garage. So in the proposed plan, when that's the gym, we'll have windows here. And then that porch slightly expanded becomes the mudroom and steps down to that walkway to the backyard, which goes down here.
That is a severe slope.
It is.
There's a change in elevation between the proposed garage and the mudroom?
Um, well, we're gonna have to bring the grade up and then let me look at that front elevation. I can show you. We have to put in a two foot retaining wall. Now, let's see. So you can see. Why is this just going over? Sorry.
We can see it, Mary.
Okay, all right. So you can see here, we're going to flatten out the grade at, you know, basically taking a, an average of the high side of the driveway now because we have a topo, we can do that. And so the garage level will be here, will go up two feet, steps up to what will be the steps to the the new mudroom. And so that, you know, two feet up will bring us to that existing platform that leads down to the backyard. But you can see the side elevation. So this is what we have to deal with.
Right.
The grade going down. And from the back, you know, you can see the whole house in the basement level, it's walkout.
So architecturally, there's no way to get from the mudroom directly into the garage. You need that intervening area.
Well, for a couple of reasons. For one, if went in directly, you would have to raise the driveway two feet, which is a huge deal, you know, so you'd be creating this grade and all this fill to get up to the garage. And then you'd have to go all the way around the garage and set it, do a new set of steps to go down to the backyard.
When you said there's no neighbor to the right, is, I mean, did you mean that literally?
Literally Newcastle. You know, and if you, I, I didn't put in the you know, the Westchester maps, but Newcastle owns a big chunk to the right that goes into and, and then beyond that, there's another large property with a very small house that's been abandoned for a long time. So at some point, probably something will happen there, but it, as I say, it's 400 feet away.
You, you're talking about the Turner Swamp?
I don't know the name of it.
That's the big area that, yeah, that it's owned by the town and it is actually been dedicated in some way. So it can't be used. A lot of wetland.
Yeah, well, in the back, and I have talked to Dennis Corelli, the, the wetlands person. So there is a, let's go to the site plan for a minute. So back in here, it's more than 100 feet away, but there is a pond. And Dennis said he would come out and take a look at it and then COVID hit and we couldn't do it. But you know, it's actually, it's on the town property. There is definitely some, some wetlands back here. So we would just get that approval as well before we got a permit.
Mary, how far is the garage from the porch? Is it?
Eight feet.
So if the garage butted up to the porch, you would need, you wouldn't need one of the variances, correct?
Correct. But I mean, so I mean, here's, here's the number. So it's, it's eight feet for the mudroom. Eight feet for the, well, the fact is we would because if the garage, well, if you put it up to the porch, then we'd still, we'd still have to do a whole new stair to get around to the backyard. Because at this point, this is the existing path and the existing patio.
But the stairs wouldn't need a variance, would it?
The existing?
No, if, if the, the new garage butted up to the house and, and the stairway were to the right of the new garage, you wouldn't need a variance, would you?
We wouldn't need a variance, except that it's very rocky on that right side where we're talking about, you know, so we're putting the garage in. This is already kind of an existing pad, existing stairs down that lead to it. If we were to have to do a whole new stair, there's a lot of rock on that right side of what is going to be the garage or proposed garage. So you know, just site wise, I don't think it works out as well. Doesn't, doesn't look as good. I think the overhang kind of connects the two and is in keeping with the age of the house. And is a, is a kind of small imprint on the property.
Mary, is there a proposed building above the garage?
There's unfinished storage.
And is there access to that from the garage or?
Yeah, yeah, there's stairs up in the garage. So it's, you know, it's got a pitched ceiling in this area. So it's very low on the sides, head height in the middle, you know, for storage.
Mary, as part of this, you made a note, you relocate the shed to a position where it doesn't require a variance?
Correct. I mean, when, when the, so the, the new survey recently done, plotted out where the shed was, I talked to the Gretzkos and they are fine moving it to a an area that does not need a variance.
Okay. Carrie, do you know if there's anyone who has an interest in this application?
I don't have anybody on here. Nobody's attending. And I don't have anybody on YouTube.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who'd like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the application of Michael and Sarah Gretzko for the construction of the new garage, detached garage be approved for the following reasons. Actually, I should put in the numbers. A detached garage that will be 50 feet from the existing front, requiring a 10 foot variance and 30, 27 feet from the side yard requiring an eight foot variance. Be approved for the following reasons. The existing, the existing house on this property is legally existing, non-conforming. Although it's in a one acre zone, it's over two acres of property. But because of the contours of the land and the amount of rock involved, the, the original house was constructed in such a, in one corner of the property requiring that it be maybe in those days legal, but today illegal and making it legally existing, non-conforming. The approval of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There was no other means, the benefit sought can't be achieved by any other means. There'll be no, no effect, adverse effect on the neighborhood. The requested variance in this particular instance is not substantial. And if you can provide us with foundation surveys prior to framing and file survey upon full completion, we should grant the variance, the restrictions of six months to start and one year to finish.
A second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper?
Approve.
Anthony Giordina?
Approve.
Harvey Bonaparte?
Yes.
Howard Dubs?
Approve.
Michael Nolan?
Approve.
Hey, thank you. You have your variance.
Next is Kingfisher Philanthropies.
What is it you wish to inform us of this evening? I think you're on mute.
Now, now I'm in.
Okay.
Thank you. What we'd like to do this evening is get three decisions from you, if we could. You now have staff reports. My understanding that that would put you in a position to make a referral to the planning board and the environmental board for their review and report on this, which is something I understand has to happen. We also would like you to undertake a decision on the State Environmental Quality Review Act. There's some good, there's some good reasons why this is an exempt action and that could be taken care of tonight. Lastly, issues were raised by staff with regard to the parking area that we have. Particularly whether this was the right location for it and whether we had detailed enough topographic surveys in order to appropriately design it for a building permit application. So what we'd like to do tonight is to take you through the alternatives for the parking area. Why this is the logical and actually only location. And get your agreement. We'd like you to make a determination under seeker that this is an exempt action. We can give you more about that. And we'd like you to make a referral. So if that sounds good, we'll, we'll jump in with some detail on those things.
Yes, please proceed.
Great. So you, you've probably heard about seeker many times. As you know, there's such a thing as a type two or exempt action. Most of the applications that appear before you are in fact a type two because variances are item number 16 of the list of type two actions under seeker. Consequently, most of them, you don't need to do anything. The concept of the type two action is that this is an action which is not going to have any significant effect on the environment. And there are examples that I think you would see reminiscent of what we're proposing here. Number eight is maintenance of existing landscaping. Number nine is construction of a facility less than 4,000 square feet. Number 12 refers to minor accessory structures like carports, which is somewhat similar to our parking area and fences, which we have. And then the last one is the one which was suggested by Sabrina, which is the acquisition of a conservation easement. That is in fact the proposal here that we're creating a preserve over which there will be a conservation easement. It is our intention at this point that the easement would be given to the Westchester Land Trust because the adjacent property which belongs to the town has an easement granted to the Westchester Land Trust. That made the most sense to us. Nevertheless, that's something that we need your approval for. But with regard to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, we think that there are several reasons why it would be perfectly rational and appropriate for you to determine that this is an exempt action. Then of course, the referral, that's up to you. We think it's time to do it. But we'd like to step into the issue of the appropriate location for the parking area. So tonight with me, of course, is one of the applicants, Laura Damaris. Ellie Hendrickson is the landscape architect who has had the most time with this other than Laura and has been doing much of the design. Antonio Grau, who has been doing all the backup engineering. So let me ask Ellie if she would to talk about the appropriate location for the parking area. And another issue which has come up, which is to whether as a condition of the special permit, we ought to be providing a landscape buffer around the property. Ellie?
So regarding the parking area, the, the area where the parking was located is the, has the least amount of slope and grade change across it of any place on the property that is not within the Um, of any place on the property that is not within the, um, common access drive north. It's the easiest accessible in a flat location. Um, we actually had prepared some studies that we reviewed with the client years, uh, a few years ago when we were discussing it and, um, we determined that that location did not require any tree removals. It didn't, um, well, I actually shot some elevation while I know that Bob, you actually noted some of the, the actual, the topography. We have three different versions of topography from various, um, times of through this process. One was aerial, one was a while ago. I was actually near the site last week and I verified that they are not as severe as you've stated. They they are, um, slighter, but, um, they are the slightest slopes on that property where we could have put that without compromising the other access drive which, um, has utility easements on it and is very, very steep. Um, the site is very, very sloped and it's the only place where you could actually park a vehicle without doing a lot of disturbance and regrading.
So, all right, why, I'm, I'm sorry, could I just say, why, why is there a discrepancy or, or difference of opinion about the elevation?
Um, the topography that we have on record and on our survey from years ago, the last time it was done, it was done, um, but with a flyover. It was not field. They were not field elevations taken with a transit on the ground. And so the most accurate topography that you can get is by getting a surveyor to do the work on the ground. A flyover is fairly accurate, but it's not perfect. And so that's where the discrepancies lie.
And so you're saying the net, net of that is what?
Um, I believe there was a, um, I think when Bob did the calculations based on the topography that was based on the aerial, there was a twenty-three percent slope across the parking lot. I actually was on site last Friday and took some measurements and it was sixteen percent. So it's still a little bit over and we will need to make some modifications of if, if that is the appropriate place and the approved location. In order for it to comply with the zoning, but it is not as, it is definitely not as severe as, um, what was written in the report.
Okay.
Uh, but I, I just wanted to, to point out that what Ellie is saying is that this is the, the best location. Uh, but in order for us to get a building permit, which is an application to Bob, uh, for this location, we need to go out and do, uh, onsite topographic survey. And we would like to limit that to the specific area chosen, which is why we're, we're looking for your agreement. Uh, that this is the best location. Maybe not ideal, but it's the best location, uh, that we have on the site.
Okay.
Are we going to be provided any visual, uh, documents to look at during your presentation tonight?
Tony, um, I think you have some pictures.
Yes, I'll bring them up now.
Actually, Tony, can you go just back to the, um, the plan very quickly?
Oh, yeah.
So, um, yeah, that, the parking area is where the, his mouse is currently. Um, and the topography that is shown on this is kind of not, it's not clear that the darker contours are ten-foot contours. Um, and if you were to look more carefully, there are dashed lines. So there is, um, and those are two-foot contours. So there is a good amount of gray change on the property in general, but as you can see, the spacing between them is pretty slight in comparison to the rest of the site. So if you, Tony, just zoom out a little, you can see everything just gets steeper, um, and steeper and steeper.
And this is the high point of Common Drive South at this point.
Yes, it is the high point of the Common Drive South.
There's a, there's another interesting point while we're on this particular illustration. You can see that the actual property line is on the other side of Common Drive South. The Common Drive South exists in an easement over a lot for. Uh, so it is actually on property of Kingfisher Philanthropies. And the parking area is of course on property of Kingfisher Philanthropies. Uh, which, uh, at least somewhat addresses the question of the, the right, uh, to use that access to get to the parking area. Uh, we would of course still have to, uh, have discussions of probably with Mr. Nickich who's building the houses off Common Drive South to the left of what you're seeing, uh, to, uh, work out some, uh, appropriate agreement about uh, a contribution to maintenance.
Um, just talking about that parking area as well, as I mentioned, we were talking about the least amount of disturbance. To the site in general and no tree removals. You can see the, the, um, curved line. That's the edge of vegetation on our property and, um, it, it, we, we did not have to remove any vegetation whatsoever, um, with the exception of a little bit of crabgrass to be able to, to put that, um, in, in that location. There were no trees removed.
Was there any other location that was considered? Uh, I understand that it, it doesn't rise to the level of
Yeah, so if you look right near where, um, Tony, the mouse is actually, we had looked at trying to bring it into the property, into that area because it is very flat. If you, Tony, if you just go in a little bit further, that would have then required a roadway off of Common Drive South that goes through a fairly steep slope off the side of the drive. And then we would have had to relocated, um, some of that existing wall, which you see the little, little, there you go, those little symbols, um, that would have had to been modified. And then the parking lot would have had to been larger in order to have proper circulation and turnaround. And so basically, um, we decided that the amount of disturbance required for that location wasn't worthwhile. Um, it would have been much more disturbance than any other, any other spot in general. So the spot where it is, is the, the flattest and had no trees and did not require, um, significant. Uh, we, we actually didn't do any grading. We just put in a couple of railroad ties and some gravel.
Okay. Uh, Bob or Sabrina, do you want to add anything to this part of the conversation?
If you do, I'd like to say something about my comments.
Please.
All due respect to the landscape architect, I can only go by the grades that are shown. I spent quite a bit of time reviewing and analyzing the grades and I've designed driveways and roadways for the past thirty years. And based on what I found, if that ever came into be for a permit, uh, that doesn't meet any type of good engineering design in any way, shape or form. Uh, first of all and foremost, any type of parking lot area should not exceed five percent for safety reasons. Now, albeit sixteen, twenty, twenty-three percent, that is certainly unacceptable in that regard. Uh, secondly, when you're coming off the driveway and entering onto the driveway, the change in grade, uh, I, I calculated between eighteen to twenty percent. So basically it doesn't meet the minimum driveway grade for safety. And plus the cars would probably bottom out. So I mean, I would recommend, and I think the attorney mentioned this before. The only common sense approach to really do a good design in this is get a land-based topo. Have a surveyor go out there, get some good grades, and that's the problem you have with these flyovers. They don't have to be much out to give you the false impression of what you have. So regardless of what I may have looked at, the best way to figure out what you have out there is to get a land-based topo. Have them go out there and take shots, not for the whole site, just in the area where the zoning board or the planning board approves the parking to be. And then resubmit a plan and it has to meet all the minimum grades for five percent. And also the change of grades as per the driveway grades in chapter sixty-four, twenty-six. Um, so those are very critical components. And also too, when you're backing out of the driveway itself, uh, one of the comments I have in here is that they have to show that a car can safely turn around backing out of the driveway to face forward coming down to the common drive. Because that driveway is only fourteen, fifteen feet wide and the cars might end up going over the other side, which would be the south side of the driveway. So basically, um, if, expect you when I go over my comments quickly now. Basically, one through nine have to do with all of the technical details of good engineering design that should go into this driveway, which it appears to me did not. And secondly, I just want to make the point very clear. Uh, the applicant seems to say they call this existing gravel parking areas. Obviously, they never got approval from the town for the billing department and they certainly never went back to the planning board to get approval. So to me, I wouldn't call it an existing. It's something that was built without any permission from the town.
Anthony, would you mind showing the photos of that? Just so they have a better sense of what we're talking about as it exists.
I mean, with me there a bit big.
So, this, this is what we're all referring to. This is how, this is how it looks as it exists today. And so we understand what, what Bob is saying about the slopes and, um, requirements.
Yeah, we, we have, we have no disagreement. Um, the only issue that we were bringing up was we wanted, we want to do the onsite topographic survey and get it right. But before we did that, we just wanted to make sure everybody understood that this is the, uh, the location with the least disturbance, uh, to the site, uh, the most nearly level. Uh, and the, we all have to, once we have the accurate topo, we'll have to do the design uh, that creates an, uh, an appropriate parking area.
So what comes first, the chicken or the egg here? Do we need the, the survey and for you to return? And, and, um, make the case or again, going back to the way I think you started, you, you wanted us to agree that this was the best location and then I, I guess you're saying you wanted to go off and do this other work.
Yes, our, our preference would very much be, uh, that you at least understand our position. Uh, that
Let's, let's assume we do understand, but it seems to me like, um, you know, we need you to do some ex, some additional work here. Continue your conversation with Bob and then come back to us on this one particular point.
If I, if I'm, if I may, I also would like to add, um, in my review for the zoning board, I went through the special permit requirements and how this application measures up to those requirements and the decisions, the determinations that the zoning board need, will need to make in order to approve the special permit request. When it comes to parking, um, and loading, you know, the, the applicant has offered four parking spaces. The, the board needs information as to how those four spaces came about, why it's not five. Is it only because you can fit four in that area? Um, for, for me, it's, it's a matter of, uh, based on your proposed use, your expected visitation of the property as an, as a nature preserve, how many spaces are, you, you know, what is your justification for those four spaces? And I think the board needs kind of the level of detail, uh, of requested detail as outlined in my memo to help them really justify issuance of a special permit for this purpose. And I think, um, I want to speak to the request to do a referral at this point. I think that that information is essential in order to refer this application and obtain the understanding of both the architectural review board and the planning board. Um, one of the, the kind of, um, missing bits of information here is whether or not the applicant plans to merge the three single lots into one lot to, um, you know, to, to work towards, um, the minimum lot requirement of, of this, of their request. And so more information and documentation regarding each of those, um, requirements of the special permit should be submitted prior to referral because you're not going to move very much forward without having the answers to those questions or the thought process provided, particularly with the planning board.
Um, we are, you know, we're trying tonight, uh, to, uh, answer, um, memos that we just got. Um, uh, one of them came in on Friday, one came in a few days ago. Before that, I'm, I'm not, I'm not complaining. I'm, I'm just saying that, uh, at this point, um, we're trying to, to move this forward, uh, in the time that we have. Uh, but I, I will also address the, that issue. Uh, as far as the calculation of the parking goes, um, our clients in fact reached out, uh, to the other similarly sized, uh, uh, reserves, uh, before even starting this. Uh, they're all owned by Salt Mill River Audubon. Uh, and Salt Mill River Audubon, uh, answered that, uh, if you're talking about a preserve, uh, that's just a preserve, uh, and it's not on main road where anybody knows about it. Uh, and considering that there are many preserves, uh, in Newcastle that get very little traffic. Uh, their suggestion was, uh, that it might be suggested that we would get twenty-six visitors a month. Uh, consequently, it seemed like, uh, providing a parking area, uh, for four in addition, uh, to being located on a cul-de-sac where parking is allowed, uh, that that would probably be enough. Uh, with regard to merging the lots, uh, we've never seen any need to do that. Uh, they're all owned by one entity. Uh, they are essentially all the same. Uh, uh, ownership anyway, uh, and there will be a conservation easement uh, over them, which, uh, requires in perpetuity, uh, that they be maintained, uh, as this preserve. Uh, so it will apply to all three lots. It, it makes no difference. Uh, this is, uh, this is a preserve being created in perpetuity. Uh, so we didn't see the need, uh, to take an additional step of going to the planning board uh, and requiring, um, that they amend the subdivision plat. Uh, particularly because, uh, an amendment of a, of a filed subdivision plat uh, sometimes requires, uh, the agreement of every lot owner on the plat. And so it could get, it could get complicated and this whole subdivision has been complicated enough. Uh, as I think everyone knows, um, so we were, we were hoping to do this in the most straightforward manner.
I'm sorry, we understand what your intent is. But I think on, on the points that, uh, Sabrina and Bob have raised, we need you to, um, you know, pursue this more vigorously.
Understood.
I would like to see all, all of the issues raised by Sabrina, uh, to be addressed before our next meeting. So we have, have a better understanding of, of how you're, uh, coming about to, to deal with them and, uh, it would give me a better comfort feeling that to, to approve anything.
Understood.
Anything else you'd like to add this evening?
Um, there is one other thing that I think we wanted to address, but we will certainly put it in our written submission. Uh, but I think it's, uh, that we can show you some pictures now. Uh, there was a question of whether we needed to amend the disturbance areas uh, because of the trails, uh, but as Ellie and Tony can more fully explain. the trails were not exactly created, they're wood chips through the woods. Ellie, if you would talk about that and Tony, if you can show us a couple of pictures of those.
Sure. So when we decided to include trails on the property, we put a few flags in the ground and then we had some mulch delivered and laid very gently on the existing ground. We removed no plant material. We just designated these trails, those, the logs that you see that are lining that trail were actually just dead wood that was next to it in the forest and just placed by hand. There were no machines used to make these, no grading was done. It all follows the natural grade and that's why we did this on site, to make sure that it was an easy walking trail. And they're literally just mulch on the ground.
So that's the, well, we really wanted to take the opportunity tonight to show you because we're on the agenda and this is what we had time to put together. But for your next meeting, we will have written answers with attachments to, for all the issues that have been raised.
Are there any slopes that are, need to be dealt with along these trails? Means are, are they, do they, are they passable by the normal person or?
Yes, that's why we did the, we laid them out in the field and we, that's why they curve around so that they're not, they're not very steep, they're, they're gentle. It's a very gentle path.
Bob, is that something you can look at?
Yes, well, I had the question along those same lines and I'm going to defer this question to Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do these types of preserves need to be accessible for ADA, i.e. for the parking lot?
The, not all preserves and parks are in fact accessible. Some of them make themselves accessible by creating wooden pathways so that they are fully accessible. But unless that is done, there's no necessity to provide handicap parking, handicapped access and the like.
Well, that was one of my comments. You'll address that when you submit in the narrative?
Of course.
Thank you, sir.
Does anyone else?
I do, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Tony.
I understand what, what Mr. Kirkpatrick was saying about merging the lots, that it gets to be complicated and you need all, you need all the neighbors to agree. And I agree that that is totally a complicated procedure. My concern, and maybe the questions could be answered in our next meeting by both the applicant and maybe the town as well, and we can weigh the differences, is that what are the, the pros and the cons of merging or not merging these properties? Are there any serious ramifications for merging or for not merging the properties? Because we're looking at here a long-term event. This is, this property is going to be in perpetuity. It's going to be a, a park and a recreation area. And we, would be nice to know what the input from, from the town officials and also from the applicant's representatives as to what they consider to be the, the long-term ramifications of merging the property or not merging the property. And if there's no, no ramifications either way, then we'll make a decision on that too. But I, I'm a little unclear as which is the better way to go. And so I, I would like, I personally, personally would like a little more information on that particular circumstance.
Do, do either Bob or, or Sabrina or Tom have anything else they want to add this evening?
Eric, I just had a question. Do the, do the lots merge by operation of law?
They're not undersized lots, so I don't see, you know, why they would. There's nothing that I'm aware of that would require a merger by operation of law. I think it's a good question regarding the, the merger. I think if there's a conservation easement that attaches the same conservation easement, attaches to all three lots in perpetuity, you know, none of those three lots are going to be able to be used for development in the future. So I don't know if there's a real basis for going through the, through combining the lots, but it's an interesting question. I, I don't, I'm not aware of anything, but I can look into the issue certainly. And I'm sure Mr. Kirkpatrick can too. My, my only question was on the Common Drive South access, just to get some confirmation on the right to use that access for this purpose. Now, I, I've started looking at the HOA and the easement issues and I think it would be helpful just to have some additional information regarding if we're using that spot for access. Just confirmation that that can be used for access and what obligations the, the applicant would have. And whether, you know, who would maintain those applications, especially given if the easement, if the conservation easement was in favor of the Westchester Land Trust, would it still be the prop, I'm assuming the property owner would still have maintained the obligations, not the land trust? But these are other questions that came up also, given that the easement is going to be in the name of the land trust then.
Eric, can we require that the conservation easement be approved by us? And also that the zoning board be added as a necessary party to any changes to the conservation easement?
I don't know. I'm not sure, you know, it, it could be a condition of the special permit before they change the condition. If possible, you could put it as a condition of the special permit that they not change the conservation easement without your, you know, without your, the zoning board's approval. I'd have to look into that though, to make sure that's acceptable.
Didn't we also have an issue about who's going to pay the HOA fees?
The, that is something that Eric had raised. And I had passed on the information to him. These, these three lots are all in HOA North. And the, the condition remains that they have to fulfill their obligations under the homeowners association, no matter what they are. It's something like the obligation of a church to continue to pay a sewer fee, even though it's a not-for-profit, it still has to pay certain kinds of taxes. So the fact that it becomes an open space instead of three houses doesn't change the fact that it belongs to this HOA.
But what if this is default?
Well, when you say default, you mean if this, these three homeowners decide that they don't want to pay, then the remaining lot owner across the way, which is lot number one, can then bring an action to force them to pay their fair share of the maintenance responsibilities.
I, I wouldn't see a problem with the, with defaulting becoming an issue, impacting ownership of the lots or anything like that. And anyone taking any, I mean, if anyone took an interest in any of these lots, in any case, they would still be subject to the special permit and, and, and the conservation easement.
Carrie, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this application?
No, nobody attending and nobody on YouTube.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we carry this matter over? Okay. We will see you next month then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina, Bob.
You're welcome. Have a good evening, gentlemen and ladies. All righty, bye-bye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
I'll make a motion that the April 29th meeting minutes be approved.
A second.
Kenneth Cooper.
Approved.
Anthony Giordina.
Approved.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Approved.
Howard Dubs.
Howard, still there?
Approved.
Michael, you should congratulate your wife, who I assume is your lighting director. Never looked better.
Thank you, Ken. I appreciate that.
See everyone next month.